This meeting is called to order at seven o'clock. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice in all.
Thank you.
Hopefully, we're being broadcast live over Van Buren Television Channel 12. We have a new system that was input. We were supposed to have a technician from the, uh, from that group coming here for our first night startup, but they couldn't make it, I guess, so we're gonna continue on. At any rate, Clerk Wright, would you please begin by taking the roll?
Sure. Trustee White, trustee Miller, trustee Martin, trustee Frazier. Bud, Clerk Wright is present. Supervisor McNair.
I'm here.
We have a call.
Thank you, sir. Today, uh, first, uh, first, we're gonna do an executive summary of the revised agenda. Today, we'll be, first of all, be approving a consent agenda. The consent agenda is comprised of the day-to-day functions of government, like paying our utility bills and approving board minutes. It is an item that is agreed upon by all the board and a work study that we hold the day before the regularly scheduled board meeting. In today's consent agenda, we will be approving those day-to-day bills and the past board meeting minutes. Under new business, we'll be discussing two new ordinances. Ordinance means law, two new laws. These are regarding fireworks and using them in the township. We are proposing these changes to account for the changes that the state of Michigan has made in this area. We will also be creating a new ordinance, new law, to establish a construction board of appeals, and we will be making an amendment, talking about making an amendment, to our township ordinances to allow for security fencing in the front yards of non-residential structures. And finally, we will be discussing the approv- the, discussing for approval the creation of two new positions within the township. The first being a position to provide support in the township assessing office and supervisor's office, and the second to provide for an executive assistant to the public services director. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
To the chair.
Trustee Bud.
I make a motion we adopt the agenda as presented. Support.
Trustee Miller. I have a motion of support by Treasurer Bud, supported by Treasurer, trustee Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. This motion passes. Next item is the cons- um, adoption of the consent agenda. Who would like to make that motion?
I will.
Trustee Frazier, could you make it and read it out, please?
I make a motion that we, um, adopt the consent agenda as presented, which includes work-study minutes of February 19th, board meeting minutes of February 19th, voucher list of February 21, voucher list of March 5th, and prepaid list of February 28.
Thank you. Can I get a, uh, support for that?
Support.
Trustee Miller. I have a motion for approval and I have a motion for support, hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion passes. We have no public hearings today, so the next, uh, the next item is going to be correspondence, announcements, and presentations. Um, I only have one, and I don't have anything formally in front of me, but robotics is going to be this weekend, I believe, isn't it? Does anybody really know with the-
It's right.
I do.
Trustee Frazier, could you speak on that?
It starts, uh, the competition will start on Friday and Saturday from eight thirty, uh, eight thirty, they'll be coming in, and at ten thirty is when they'll have the kickoff. They have speakers on Friday morning and on Saturday. Saturday morning, there will be a speaker, I can't remember his name right now, but from Ford Motor Company, who works in robotics, and, um, they have approximately eighty teams that will be competing, uh, against one another, and, uh, Belleville has been new to the robotics program. In the last two years, we have done very well, however, and we're agreed to host it again, and that speaks a lot for our, our school district because we have a great facility in order to, um, promote robotics and robotics education because it's the future, and we do have one of the only high schools in the area that offer, uh, tech, um, coursework from freshman through senior, where students are given a computer and they work in small groups and learn how to work in teamwork and the new production of today's workforce.
If you're able to, you should go out and see it. It's pretty amazing what goes on there. It's pretty neat. The waste management, I know sponsors too, so thank you.
And it is free to get in. There's no, uh, charge to get in. Everything's very well organized.
Is there anybody else that has an announcement? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna move on to public comment. Uh, first off, is public comment for anything on the, on the agenda tonight? There's nobody here for that? Okay, unfinished business, we have none. New business, moving right along. The first item is to consider approval of the second reading, this is second reading, of ordinance O-2-19-19 parentheses two, which is an amendment of Article Three, which is the Fireworks Safety Act of Chapter Forty-Six, the Fire Prevention and Protection. This will amend sections forty-six dash through seventy-one. Can I get a motion before we begin?
I make a motion we approve.
Support.
Okay. Uh, uh, fire, uh, excuse, yeah, oh, okay, Fire Chief Wright, surprised me, I didn't think you were coming in.
Not quite as loud as you thought. A little bit, but not enough. Uh, good evening. The second reading has to do with the, basically, the state law changed their regulations on when they were gonna allow the fireworks to be ignited. There's been a lot of talk over the years, they finally, the legislature got together and, uh, made a bill to change the law, and basically, what we're doing is, we're gonna adopt the state law regulations as far as, uh, when you're allowed to, uh, ignite fireworks. And as a recap, I can, uh, let you know that the, uh, it will be allowable under our ordinance, which mirrors the state law, to ignite fireworks, uh, on the, on the following days after eleven a.m. And that would be December thirty-first until one a.m. on January first, the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days, and on June twenty-ninth to July fourth until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days, July fifth, if the date is a Friday or Saturday, you can do it until eleven forty-five p.m., and Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day until eleven forty-five p.m. on each of those days. So basically, they're telling us when they can be done, so it's just not a generic national holiday, which could mean many things. So that's what that's about.
Excellent. This, um, does anybody have any questions? We've gone through this as a second reading. Okay?
Um, I'd just like to, uh, there is a fine and, that goes along with this, correct?
Yes, yes, there's a municipal civil infraction fine that can be assessed, uh, up to a thousand dollars for the violation.
But it doesn't have to be a thousand.
It doesn't a thousand, but, I mean, that's really at the court's-
At the court level.
The court will decide that.
They can determine that.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a motion by trustee Frazier, oh, sorry, trustee White.
Uh, Chief, could you possibly tell us what is legal and what is illegal for fireworks on the residential lots?
Well, as long as you're on your own property, your property, you can, you can light off the, uh, the commercial sale fireworks. Not, when I say commercial, I don't mean, like, what we have at our fireworks over by Cork Park or over by the Ball Diamonds there, but, uh, you, you can light off things that go up in the air and they make loud noise and whatnot, but you cannot, you cannot go on to, like, church property, a school property, property that does not belong to you. Um, you know, fireworks cannot be sold to minors, minors can't be possessing them, you can't be intoxicated lighting them off. None of those law, none of the existing law concerning that has changed. All of that is still in place. The only changes are, is the timeframes. That was the only real changes they made, and the fine. The fine was increased.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. All right, we have a motion for approval by trustee Frazier. It is supported by trustee Miller. Hearing no further discussion, I'm calling for a roll call vote since this does make it a law. Clerk Wright.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Bud.
Yes.
Yes, for me, supervisor?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. This next item is to consider, this next item is to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance O-three dash O-five dash nineteen parentheses two. This is to discuss an approval of the amendment of Article Two Fire Prevention Code of Chapter Forty-Six, which is Fire Prevention and Protection. This will amend the sections forty-six through thirty-one.
Move.
Clerk Wright?
Court.
Clerk Wright and trustee Martin. Fire Marshal, could you take it away?
Yes, um, the two thousand eighteen Fire Prevention Code, NFPA one one oh one, Life Safety Code, is an update to the already adopted NFPA two thousand twelve version that we operate under now. There's, uh, a lot of updates to that, but, uh, basically, it's just updating the code to the current model instead of having to basically make a jigsaw puzzle to get from twelve to eighteen. We're just doing eighteen and updating all the current standards.
Okay, um, basically, we do this every couple of years to bring us up to the codes of the national standards, best practices.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay. We have a motion by clerk Wright, we have a support by trustee Martin, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. This motion passes. Next item is to consider approval of the second reading of general ordinance O-two nineteen nineteen parentheses one, which is an ordinance to consider, to establish the construction board of appeals. Can I get a motion?
To the chair.
Trustee Bud.
I make a motion we approve the second reading of general ordinance two nineteen nineteen here and one, which is an ordinance to establish the construction board of appeals. Support.
Okay. Uh, take it away, Mr. Akers.
Good evening. Um, just to give a brief summary, uh, as we've discussed this at a couple of different meetings, but this ordinance essentially provides a framework, uh, for our construction board of appeals, specifically regarding membership numbers and terms. Uh, construction board of appeals are required in the state construction code. Um, we are required to have a board so that way they can hear appeals from the decisions of our building official. Um, and essentially, what this ordinance does is, is create a framework, defines terms of membership, and defines how many members the boards has. Uh, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I got a question. We have a construction board of appeals, why do we need to establish the ordinance?
Um, the purpose for the ordinance, under the state building code, it does not specify exactly how many members the construction board of appeals can have. The state construction code says you can have as few as three and as many as seven. What this ordinance does is it indicates that the township has three members, and it indicates what their terms are. Uh, this comes into play when specifying when we have quorum for a meeting, um, and it really, what it does is it ties up a lot of those concerns.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, through the chair.
Trustee Miller.
Director, can you explain why this is so specialized? And what I mean by that is, you don't need, or you, you're not going to have a board liaison, per se, and give the reasons behind it. I think we should explain that.
Well, one of the, one of the qualifications that an individual has to have to be on the construction board of appeals is they have to be familiar with construction, they have to be familiar with trades. One of the reasons why this happens is because the, a lot of the questions that come up and a lot of the concerns are decisions made on individual construction projects, and they get highly detailed. Um, you know, just to kind of give an example, our, our current construction board of appeals has three members, and it's composed of somebody who's specialized in general construction, there's an individual who specializes, he's electrical contractor, master electrician, and then there's an individual who owns a, uh, heating and cooling and mechanical and plumbing company. So, we have currently on the board a good mix where we cover all the trades, so if there's any questions that come up with regards to plumbing inspections, mechanical inspections, building inspections, or electrical inspections, we're covered by an expert in that field. Um, a lot of times with, uh, boards and commissions, you know, one of the requirements is having contractors, and a lot of times, you don't always have contractors or individuals who are, uh, who, who have that knowledge on the boards and commissions.
And these meetings will be posted from time to time? It won't be a regular schedule like most other boards and commissions?
Yes, that, that is correct. They are required, we are required to post them under the Open Meetings Act, so it's a minimum eighteen-hour notice. We usually give a couple of days. Um, the reason why they don't have regularly scheduled meeting times is primarily because, um, you know, we, we truthfully don't get that many applications. Uh, in the last three, three and a half years, I can tell you, we've utilized the board twice.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Trustee Frazier.
So, if I was appealing a decision from the, the way I understand, from the building department, correct? Okay, um, I would go before those three people, but you would be there, or who would be there?
Um, so, under the normal process, we would, we would schedule a meeting, um, you would have the chance to, you'd have to fill out an application, um, we would work with the applicant, we work with the board members to schedule a time that works for everybody. At that meeting, uh, the applicant is given the opportunity, if they're filing an appeal, they're given the opportunity to explain why they feel, uh, the building official applied the building code incorrectly, and, uh, then the building official is given an opportunity to explain their actions, explain, you know, why they feel they indicate, that they feel they applied the code correctly, and then it's gonna ultimately be up to the construction board of appeals to make the decision as to, to who was right. Um, so that's, that's typically how the process works, there's usually a little bit of dialogue and, and discussion, and, um, truthfully, what we utilize the construction board, board of appeals mostly for is, uh, condemnation orders, demolition orders, um, and a lot of times, it's, it's, if people need some extra time to do some work, a lot of times, the board will, will take that into consideration when they're, they're making their decisions, so, um...
So it's basically, those three impartial people will be making the decision. It will, you'll be presenting your side and the applicant will be presenting his side.
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Okay, hearing no further?
Just one other, if you-
Sure, go ahead.
How long are the appointments for?
Um, under the ordinance, I believe, the, we have put the appointments under three-year terms. Just, yes, so, um, they're three-year terms, and which is consistent with other boards and commissions that we have in the township.
Okay.
I was under the, I'm sorry, I was under the impression that they would be a one-year, two-year, and three-year terms so that we could, uh, reappoint one each year or replace the person?
Yes, under the ordinance, they're, they're, they start, they reset January first, they're staggered terms.
Staggered terms.
Um, but, but ultimately, when they do get appointed, they will be, for the full terms, they'll be three-year terms. So in the beginning, they'll be one, two, and three-year, and then after the beginning period, it'll be three-year terms.
So, so the beginning terms for all three will be three years? Or, we, we will appoint one to one year, one to two years, one to three years, then next year, we'll come back and do something about the one that was appointed to one year? That's the-
No. We currently have, it's currently filled up, and we're appointing, and we're re-upping them as they come up, uh, come every year.
So the provisions, the provisions in the ordinance, um, you know, they do highlight that the terms will start on January first, and they'll be one, two, and three-year terms, and, and the intent behind that is so you stagger the terms.
Right.
So, so that way, each and every year, somebody will be up for consideration as to whether or not they should be reappointed. And that's, that's the whole intent behind it. Um, so one of the things that we'll have to do is we'll have to take a look at the existing terms and the existing membership and, and apply this, but, um, but, but that'll be something that, that we'll have to address.
Are we going to vary from that? And just appoint everyone to a three-year term, or are we gonna appoint one person to one, one person to two, and the third person to three-year terms? So they can come back next year, then, uh, the person with one-year term will come up again, so...
Either way, I, I, I think it'll be at the discretion of the board, because the purpose of the ordinance is to, to set everybody up so they're staggered terms. So we could come back and reappoint everybody, or we could appoint them to three-year terms and just have varying expiration dates. I mean, we're, we're gonna work within the ordinance to make sure that it's correct, but, um...
How, how can we appoint them to a three-year term with varying expiration dates?
Well, when they vary, the expiration, the, the year varies, that they-
Oh, oh, okay, I see what you're, what you're talking about now.
They, no, go ahead.
So, so the, the first-year term, when his reappointment came up, we could, uh, uh, reappoint him to a three-year term to move forward?
Yes.
And same thing with the second guy, so everybody would be appointed to the three-year term, but those three-year terms would, one individual would expire every year?
Yes.
Through to the chair.
Uh, treasurer Bud.
Um, we already have a construction board of appeals, so the only thing this did was legally set how many people were on it in those regulations. So we already have a, a person in place, so I don't think we've had to worry about staggering because they're staggered right now. We have a board of appeals in place right now.
That's already staggered.
Yes.
Yeah. I, I just wanted to make sure that it rotates so that one individual cannot stay on it for a, a long period of time and have maybe undue influence, you know? That's important to rotate, uh, the members, and so new applicants can apply every year whenever the opening's up, right?
Yeah, I, I believe, um, the township's always accepting applications for new boards and commission members, um, so, so, every, at the expiration of every term, it's, it's, uh, truthfully up to the supervisor to determine-
We do.
-if they want to reappoint that individual or not, and, and ultimately, it's up to the board, that's to confirm the reappointment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by treasurer Bud, and it was, we have support by trustee Miller. Um, this is the second reading, so it requires a roll call vote. Clerk Wright, would you please call the roll?
Clerk, yes. Trustee Martin.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Trustee Frazier.
Yes.
Treasurer McNair.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, next item, item number four. Item number four is to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance O-three O-five nineteen parentheses one, which is to amend the township zoning ordinance regarding security fencing and fencing in the front yard of non-residential zoning districts. Can I get a motion?
To the chair.
Trustee Martin.
I make a motion to consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number O-oh-three dash zero-five dash one-nine paring one, to amend the township zoning ordinance regarding security fencing and fencing in the front yard of non-residential zoning districts.
Support.
Trustee Miller. All right, um, this is the first reading, Director Akers.
Thank you. Um, this zoning ordinance amendment provides several changes to our zoning ordinance with regards to, uh, security fencing and fences in the front yard in certain non-residential zoning districts. Uh, we, we discussed the changes in detail at work study, but just to give a, a brief overview, what, what this amendment does is, you know, not only does it prohibit barbed wire, spikes, nails, any sharp thing on top of the fence in, um, all of our zoning districts, but it also breaks up some of the fencing standards with regards to security, uh, and splits them up based on our districts where we allow typical commercial uses, districts where we allow industrial uses, and districts, uh, where we allow residential uses. There were no changes to any of the fence requirements for residential districts, those were left alone, and all the changes to the industrial districts and the commercial districts were, uh, primarily to give the planning commission discretion to allow, uh, security fencing at a, a standard of eight feet for certain uses. What really triggered this zoning ordinance amendment was the U.S. Signal Project. That property that they're on is zoned M.T., we allow data centers on M.T., uh, on M.T., I'm sorry, O.T. We allow data centers on the O.T.'s zoning district. A lot of the data centers require higher levels of security, so they do want those eight-foot fences all the way around the perimeter of the property, and, under our current zoning law, we don't allow, uh, uh, front yard fences in that O.T. district. So that was, that was the original, um, uh, I guess, item which, which drew the changes. Um, one of the items that I do want to highlight is with the fences that we require in these districts, I mean, these aren't, you know, eight-foot tall chain-link fences with barbed wire on top, these are eight-foot tall decorative, uh, fences, so a lot of times, they're, they're, uh, they're the aluminum, black aluminum vents that we see around detention ponds in a lot of the, uh, community. Um, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has on the proposed changes.
No, we've, we've become a data central for southeast Michigan, or Michigan, and, um, these places need to be protected, so, I can, I completely understand. Hearing no further discussion, I have a motion for approval by trustee Martin. I have support by trustee Miller on the first reading, all in favor. Aye opposed. This motion goes to a second reading on, at our next meeting. Next item, item number five is to consider approval of the two thousand nineteen annual budget amendment to the supervisor and assessing offices, uh, to instate a full-time confidential administrative assistant with the job description that's attached. Uh, presenting this will be Dan Salmon and assessor Stevenson.
Good evening, board. As we discussed last night at work study-
Oh, wait, I'm supposed to, I need a motion.
Well moved.
Trustee Frazier.
To consider approval of the, uh, two thousand nineteen annual budget amendment to the supervisor assisting, assessing office and full-time confidential administrative assistant job description.
Support.
Supported by trustee Miller. Okay, begin.
Good evening. Uh, as we discussed last night at work study, current assessing clerk Kathy Klein will be retiring next month. Uh, we're assured for good this time, and with that being said-
Sure, sure.
Should we add another clerk?
Supervisor and assessing office has been evaluating options, uh, the best course of action to fill that position going forward. Uh, the item you had before you proposes consolidate the two part-time positions of assessing clerk and confidential secretary into a full, single full-time position of confidential administrative assistant. The job description for this position was included in your packet. There is a net increase to the general fund budget of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is mostly in fringe benefits, which requires an amendment to the budget. Funding that position will be split equally between the assessing and supervisor's office. We believe the proposal creates a high value in that full-time position, emerging the duties, and will sustain a high level of customer service to the public, provide full-time coverage and stability to both offices, and presents an opportunity for long-term transition planning, particularly in the trend, uh, assessing office. And also, fingers crossed, we are hoping for a reduction in assessing contracted services line item in the future. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Through the chair.
Trustee Frazier.
You know, I, I support, uh, this effort to, uh, give assessing and the supervisor's office one full-time person, however, um, you know, I, I did not appreciate the, the sell that you gave us, that this would be sell, saving the township money, because having two part-time positions with no benefits and combining and making it one full-time position with a full benefit package causes it to have longevity, um, it costs to the township. We will be paying the retirement, the health benefits, the vacation, the sick time, all that's included in the benefit package, which our employees are blessed to have fairly a good benefit package. So, I understand that the assessor consulting will be less, that we will save money there because we won't need the, uh, hopefully, in the near future, we won't need the consultant as much, and she's at a level four, I believe, and we hopefully will have, uh, someone that can do that at, uh, within our, within our own operation. Um, so, I, I would just like to say, in the future, if you're going from part-time to full-time, come on, we can figure it out. It's thirty-five thousand dollars in a package for an employee, and this isn't a one-year thing, it's gonna be a continual thing, so we're getting extra cost involved. So I can, th- that's all I want to say about this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Trustee Miller.
So, it was discussed last night, and, and this, the costs were talked about, and although it was brought up and answered that there was no actual cost savings, what we haven't been talking about and what we should be equally concerned with is the restructuring here, and how important it, it is to this office and what that will provide for the residents, so please talk about how this will, uh, give back- So please talk about how this will give back in services to the community and prove that. I'd like, more importantly, talk about why this is being done, how it will benefit the community.
Sure, sure. A lot of the benefit to this is a lot more to do with the assessing office because of the amount of work it is to get familiar with the community and a lot of planning that's involved with that. So I'm going to bring in-
Don't even attempt to talk about assessing.
Through the Chief Assessor.
Enjoying watching him struggle with that a little bit. Assessing in supervisor's office is pretty unique, okay? We have two separate departments in one kind of smaller area. I mean, it looks like it's widespread, but it's kind of chopped up. So we're kind of limited in our space. But we share phones. We share the counter. We share the copier. We share the sink. We share the coffee pot. We share everything. So we're really one office, but two separate departments. So in looking at this, putting one employee that is shared between the two departments and enhancing the job description that we have, Dan and I worked on enhancing that to meet the needs, the current needs of the supervisor's office, but also the current needs of the assessing office. Because as assessing laws change and different degrees of levels of things that we have to do in assessing office, this will give the opportunity for this person also to get possibly their MCAT, in fact, it's one of their requirements, that they would be open to getting their MCAT licensing and then maybe go to their second level of that, to where they could actually do some sketching. The GIS maps, which I talked about last night, that we're finally done with those. But one of the components with the GIS mapping is to have the licensing to work on that is very costly. So it's on one computer. So, you know, that way, we could get this person trained to update the maps. Whenever I do a lot split or a combination, the map can be updated automatically. And then each department can insert that page right into their maps. So we're looking at enhancing and giving a more efficient service, I think, to our residents by doing these in a combined sense and working together. I don't know if you noticed, but just a few minutes ago, I ran down the hall to get some copies for Dan. That shows we work together. And I think we'd like to keep that department working together. Previously, many years ago, that position was a full-time position, and it was with combined between the two offices.
So what is the next step after tonight, if this is approved?
That will be posted.
It'll be posted.
Yeah, it will be posted, and then we'll start receiving applications and reviewing them. And we would like, hopefully, that we'll be able to utilize Kathy for a week or two of training, at least on the GIS maps, so, before she leaves us.
She may never leave. No.
Well, I think her house is real close to being sold, so, yeah.
She certainly knows where the bodies are buried because she's been here and worked in so many departments.
Yeah.
And she's such a valued employee, so. Both, both the people that work in your office, the supervisor's confidential secretary and Ms. Klein, have been very good employees.
Okay. Hearing no further discussion.
Supervisor.
Oh, Trustee White?
Thank you. Are there a couple of applicants already in mind for this position or not?
No.
I note that you list all of the supervisor's duties and assessor's duty, and for example, for the assessing duties, obtained the Michigan assessing technician certification and Michigan credified assessing officer within a timeframe set forth by the assessing coordinator. What is an appropriate timeframe for that?
Well, I would think that the first one, the MCAT, is a very easy one to obtain. It's a two-and-a-half-day class. It's very low cost. So I think that one should be done within the first year, probably within the first six months, I would say, because it's offered usually once a month, somewhere pretty close locally, too. The second one is a little more time-consuming one, so I would think that would be about a year, year and a half out.
And, and I would think the second one is just to more or less be a file clerk to take care of the affidavits, PREs and sales disclosures. Same thing with the thorough and digitized files and references. Same thing with the fourth one and the fifth one update. But says, minimum qualifications must possess a bachelor's degree or equivalent prior work experience in a general office setting. Knowledge of township structure and organization of plus. A bachelor's degree and, that's on the second page, Coordinator Stevenson, under required knowledge, skills, and minimum qualifications. First one.
Are you asking a question?
Right. The type of bachelor's degree. It just says, must possess a bachelor's degree or equivalent prior work experience. Assessing is something that must be 100% correct.
Well, yeah, I think that we would look at each individual for what sort of experience they have. I can't say that we're specifically looking for a certain type of bachelor's degree, but I think just looking that maybe they've had a little secondary education.
And I certainly understand that, but I don't want you to put yourself in a position where you have to do a lot of the training for somebody who's going to take this position because that takes a lot of time, as you and I both know, to be an assessor and to get it correct.
Sometimes it's worth it to train the right person, though, too. You know, somebody took a chance at training me, so, and it worked out for me.
Worked out for us.
Right, that's, that's correct, really.
Okay. Anybody else? One second.
I'm okay.
All right, go ahead.
I don't think there's a degree, a bachelor's degree in assessing, is there?
No, no.
We're just looking for people who have good communication skills, who can talk to people, who can use the technology, and who are adaptable and flexible and can work in a team, basically, those kind of qualities.
Right, yeah, yeah.
But there is, through the Chair, a tremendous amount of additional training to be an assessor, go from level one to level four. And I can tell you, she's probably equal to a four or five-year college degree.
Yeah, I know.
Specialty.
Made a mistake on my assessment.
Okay. Oh. All right. We have a motion by Trustee Frazier. It's supported by Trustee Miller. Hearing no further comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? This motion passes. Thank you very much. The next item is to consider approval of a new position for as executive assistant to the Public Services Director. Director-
Supervisor.
Yes. Clerk Wright?
I would like to make the motion to approve a new position for, of executive assistant of Public Services Director, and also authorize HR Director to post a position.
Trustee Martin?
Can we have discussion beforehand?
We're, oh, actually-
Before he explains it, I just want to clarify the motion, if that's okay.
Okay, go ahead and clarify the motion.
Would you please include the budget amendments?
Oh.
Yeah, that's all. Just clarify the motion.
Did we do that last time?
That's okay with the maker of the motion and the secondor, right?
Also, with the approval of the annual, with the budget amendments as specified.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Director Akers.
Thank you. This proposal is to create a new position in the Public Services Department, and the intent of the proposal is mainly to focus on two things. Those two things are public engagement. As we had indicated at work study last night, you know, we looked at implementing social media to, you know, work towards engaging the public on a number of topics, including environmental issues such as Belvede Lake or any other environmental issues that come up, water and sewer outreach, water sewer projects, and also engage some of the business community and economic development items. The second thing that this project is really intended to focus on is capacity in filling the gaps within our departments. We discussed last night that there are a couple gaps, specifically with regard to inputting building and grounds assets into City Works for our asset management software. Focus on some of the special projects that we've been working on as a department, including the Iron Bell Trail, our master plan, Splash Pad, Township Signage, museum improvements, 2.5 million dollar water metering project, you know, many projects like that. And in addition to that, this position will provide some customer response support in the Planning and Economic Development Department and some assistance with project management. This position is intended to be a flexible position, which can provide support across the three divisions of the department. So that's Planning, Economic Development, Building and Grounds, and Water and Sewer. This position will have no management responsibility and is really intended to be a high-level administrative position. The position will be supervised by our Public Services Director, who will allocate what they work on. And the financial impact for this position, the change will be a reduction in the Water and Sewer Fund of approximately $50,000 and an increase in the general fund by approximately $16,000, as we discussed last night. The board requested at the work study last night that we look at comparable salaries and provide them for the meeting tonight, similar positions. Our HR Director, Director Sumter, was, we were fortunate enough, she was able to provide that for us, which I handed out prior to the meeting. So you do have that in front of you, and Director Sumter will discuss it if you have any questions. And lastly, I believe the board should also receive information. I just want to, I guess, make a clarification that the position will be posted externally, and we will go through our normal hiring process as part of our next steps. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Last night, last evening, and I think the Treasury indicated that we did make, recently there was changes made in the Building and Planning Department, but those changes was based on recent growth. We're busy, they're busy in the department. And we also emphasized, as those changes was made, that if they got to the point where they needed help, to indicate that they needed help. And they indicate, they have came and indicated that they need help, and this position is a result of that. So with that being said, I think it's a good thing that we are finally, with you guys being busy in that department, meaning that the township is growing. And I think that's a great thing for the township, especially if it's with control of growth. And I think that's the thing that's going on now. We are able to control the growth that's happening in the township, and I remember the times that we were, it wasn't happening. So it's a good thing. It's a good thing for the township.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Martin, did you want to speak as a secondor?
I support the position and understand why last year, when we reorganized the Public Works, the Water and the Building Department, when we reorganized it and we got a director of Public Works, I understood then that it may be projected that we may need additional help. And I think the revenue that's been produced shows that you're paying for, for yourself and increasing a demand of the public. I think it's very important to, for your goal, to reach out to the public and to get public participation and more interaction with our community on, you know, building that goes up or whatever. I know that the other night, the Lake Drawdown meeting was very well-attended, and I looked over at the sheet where people wanted to have one-to-one consulting with the building director or with the director. And there was a long list of people that demanded one-on-one. So that's very time-consuming also. So our first goal is to give our residents the best service possible and to encourage the kind of quality growth that will make our township outstanding. Not just anybody coming in, but we want to attract quality. And the Building Department is instrumental in that. So I think it's a good position. However, I do have a question regarding this that, that Ms. Sumter provided us. I noticed that Romulus pays 52,146, Pittsfield Township pays 57,988, but there's no listing of, you know, what was their beginning salary and what number of years' experience do these people have that are in those positions right now?
It does not give us that information.
No, but you could, you know, I would advise us, as far as I'm concerned, the 52,000 is on the high end. I would have rather have seen it, and I said this last night, at the lower end, you know, 48, somewhere in that range. Because we are looking, it's my understanding from the job posting, that we're not asking for years of experience. And so we're going to maybe get somebody who's a beginner. And certainly, we have an excellent intern in the Building Department right now who might be willing to apply for the position. And we want to encourage her because we already know she's an excellent employee and has done an excellent job for us. So we've seen her, her result. So we want to encourage her to apply. But I think the, you know, the salary might be at the top end.
Trustee-
And if we had experience with it requirement, then I could see 52.
Trustee Frazier, the closest I could get was I asked her to look into what, what a planning position would be like. And she did find something with two years' experience at 54, 58, and 54 as starting salaries. But that was the closest thing we could come to, to getting those numbers. These numbers ranged up to that, to, we've got numbers that show that these executive assistants sometimes get, well, how much are they, 10, $20,000 higher than these? We didn't even give those to you because they're ridiculous, the numbers.
For communities that have 100,000 population?
There's nobody really has a position like this that does three different jobs.
Okay, well, you know-
So it's hard, it's hard to nail that number down. So we did, we did the best we could.
But if we are getting a beginning person, I'm just saying, I don't know who we'll get. We're posting the job because it's always good, if we have internal candidates, to let them stand up against the outside candidates. And then we can say to the public, we did do our job. We did, you know, hire the best candidate because our inside candidate was the best candidate.
Okay.
And, you know, I just think a beginning, I didn't get an opportunity, I was going to look in the Occupational Outlook Handbook to see what the feds listed as the beginning salary, but I don't think it would be at 52 with just a bachelor's or, I don't know, are we only requiring a bachelor's or in urban or engineering or something like that?
Bachelor's degree, bachelor's degree or equivalent service, so.
And this person would have to have planning, a planning-style degree.
But we're not saying bachelor's in urban planning or development or anything like that.
But we are requiring that they have a bachelor's degree. And just to touch on what you said about the Occupational-
Outlook Handbook?
Outlook, yes. The Bureau of Labor Statistics numbers were in line with CWW, and I actually did that comparison last, just to make sure that all of the numbers they had listed lined up. So that number is a pretty solid number. Trust me, it, I've been worrying about this the whole day.
You know, I just think, I think it's high, but, you know.
We tried to come up, yeah.
I just want to state that I'm not for, I mean, because we're going to give a full benefit package.
Through the Chair.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. You were next, and you look like you want to go next after that, okay?
Well, I would like to hear, since we just got this information this evening, and I did reach out to you, I'd like to hear from other board members since we were missing this element as to how they feel about the salary. I'd like to hear, if I could, from the other two, so I understand where we are.
Being a kid that's graduating college, I can tell you that this is lower.
I asked if they could.
So that's my position.
Okay.
I think that's proper.
Supervisor.
Go ahead.
It states here that we would be saving $40,000 from Akenna and Associates in two different sections. However, we've had this intern here for the last year, and evidently, we haven't saved any money at all. Is there any guarantee to this Board that you can, you can and will save a minimum of $40,000 on Akenna's money? And, and I know you can't guarantee that, Director, but, but, but if it's in print, then we certainly have every right to expect that.
So $40,000 is, is the budget savings. $40,000 is what we budget for the service each and every year. I can tell you that of the services, the onsite services, which are the, where they come in on Thursdays, does cost approximately $20,000, so that, that number will be a direct savings. The $20,000 that's coming out of the CDVG that we budget, there are years where we get up to $20,000 depending on the level of CDVG activity and the type of projects that we have, but it generally ranges somewhere between 10 and 20 there on an annual basis. But, but it's, it's, it's the number that we budget.
And, and I understand that. Also, if, if we use the Bureau of Labor Statistics, that would include New York City, Chicago, is this strictly for the state of Michigan?
Strictly for the area of Michigan, and it's stated right at the top. Only for Michigan.
Okay. This is all Michigan communities?
All Michigan. And actually, there are 10,160 executive assistant or executive administrative assistant positions in Michigan, and that was the median salary range.
And I understand you were under a time constraint, but when we get handed a, a sheet of paper at the Board table, figure the time constraint that we're under because we don't have time to, and, right.
Working with your time constraint, Trustee.
And I understand that, and I understand you're under a, a time constraint like that. And are we going to go out and advertise this to see who's available, or are we going to give the job to Grace?
We are posting this position and we are going through the normal hiring process.
The motion was included that I authorize HR to post the position.
Okay, very good. That's all I have, but I'm, I'm just having a problem with the way that we're constantly, every Board meeting, it seems like we're spending, spending, spending.
Trustee Martin, you...
To address trustee Miller, I, I believe that it would be presumptuous to think that the intern would get this position. So if we're taking it out to bids, it's only logical that it would be a competitive wage to attract desired and qualified candidates. So I don't believe the salary is out of line based on the comparisons that we have. I think that, you know, you want to open bid, you want to be able to get a, a large pool of candidates, and you want to not make the salary so restrictive where they, they wouldn't come, so that's my feeling.
I, I would agree with, with trustee Martin. I, I think the position is needed, and I do believe the salary is fair.
Through the Chair, if I could.
Trustee Miller still has kind of the Board, so go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for giving your opinion tonight. I appreciate that. I support the position. You made a wonderful case for yourselves. You showed what the revenue was coming in last night that was talked about in detail, your jobs and what it was like on a day-to-day basis. All three of you do a wonderful job, and I don't mean to over compliment you, but you do. And, but with that being said, questions were asked last night. My question was, well, you came up with a figure and, and I noticed tonight that things were corrected, overly corrected, when it was going to be posted, because last night, that's not where the, the conversation had gone to, nor what was told to me internally. So, and based on trustee Martin's, just recent response right now, that would seem logical to go ahead and, and go out for bid, and this is a, a good place to, to draw in competitive candidates. But on the flip side, you have to look at comparatives. And we all know that even now, we're over-correcting, like I heard it four or five times in just a few minutes, that this is going to be posted, it's going to be posted. Okay. But when you give us this piece of paper, and I came home and I rushed to my computer because I know I got, I know this is coming, I don't see it, I called Dan, and he's like, and it's already after four, and he's like, "Okay, I'm gonna go in and I'm gonna talk to them right now and we'll get it to you." And you did at that point. And I look at it and it's like, you know, why am I having a problem with this? I know that the position's needed, but, and they made their case to that, so why is this just not settling with me? And I'm thinking, it's because of the way of the process, and I've said it all along. I should never have to come up here and have this long conversation with everyone and get everyone's opinion at this stage. That should have been all taken care of in, you know, weeks ago, days ago, with all of us. So to ask for any point, hey, we need to get a salary comparison, we really should have had that beforehand because the main job of all of us is to oversee the money. I'm not going to question that you want this person for any reason, you made your argument. Nobody knows your jobs better than you all do. That includes assessing Building and Planning, Water and Sewer. So I'm, I'm, I'm very cautious there with criticizing as to what your needs are, but at the same time, I have to justify the money. That's my job, that's everyone else's job. So tonight, when I get this piece of paper and I have to make this decision now, it doesn't sit well with me. Because I know where the discussion was being driven last night, so I know internally, not everything's being said, but we have to make our arguments on what is presented to us. And at face value, it makes sense, but internally, I know different. So I think, when I look at this, I can't argue about needing it, but I, I have to question the amount. I think it, I have to agree with trustee Frazier that it's too high. It's for, because I know this will be entry-level position. I know it has to go and get posted, and, and I understand why that was said tonight, but I have to question the amount of money that we're starting off. I believe in hiring entry-level, sure. Mid-level, if that was the case, you know, we'll look at that, but we all know where this is going, and I think that in all fairness, we don't want to start out people too high. I think there's something to say about merit, about proving yourself and working up to a salary. Now, I'm, I've been steady here, I've said it with many of you. In fact, our Director, our HR Director, Director Matt Best, when he came on board, and there's a whole list, and I haven't wavered from that, even with your, with your assistant, Supervisor, when, when Mr. Solomon came on board, I've stuck to it. I just think this is a little high. I'm not arguing that we don't need it. You absolutely proved that, it's just the salary. I support the position, I don't support the salary. And I wished I could have had more time to talk to Director Sumter, our HR Director, and I did reach out to her as soon as I came, I, I could, but because of the timeline, it just didn't happen, and that should have happened. And she probably would have sat down with me and explained it in more detail, and I wouldn't have had a problem with it, and I would have voted on it. More often than not, and probably many of you don't know, is that I am supporting a lot of what you're wanting to do behind the scenes. Surprisingly, I will support it because, but when I come up here and I have to vote because of the way the process is carried out, what I really wanted to say yes to the last two times I had to say no to, and that doesn't make sense. And I see that happening more and more and more. So I hope this Board as a whole will look at that going forward. I support the position, I, I just can't say yes to them, to the salary. So thank you for hearing me all out, and we'll, we'll go on.
All right. Trustee Frazier.
You know, Romulus, I'm willing to bet, has an experienced assistant in place, and Romulus is a bigger community, and they're only making 146, $146 more.
We're larger than Romulus.
We are.
Okay, but Romulus has the airport, Amazon, GM.
We're larger than Romulus. By a good sight.
But, but Romulus has the airport.
They also carry the airport.
Okay, they have the Amazon, they have, GM is pouring money into Romulus.
We have Ashley Capital, which is larger than Amazon.
Ashley Capital is not larger than Amazon.
Million and a half square feet.
No way. They're, okay, you can say that, but I don't believe it. But anyway, and it disturbs me, the other thing that raises a flag, I agree with trustee Miller that I, I don't understand why we're just asking for a bachelor's degree. We have somebody that we need to have urban development or urban training, we need somebody who has engineering. We don't need a English literature major who has a bachelor's degree in English Studies or History or whatever, a general bachelor's degree. We need specific skills here to really augment the positions that we already have. We need, we didn't take an intern who just had a bachelor's degree in your department, we took an intern that had urban development and was in that study. So I don't know why we're not looking for that in our job description, a bachelor's with urban development background or experience in that field, you know, it would be more And the other thing, that there was a resident last evening at our work study that recommended that maybe we should go for three clerks instead of, who specialized in certain fields, instead of going for another hierarchy position. Because this is, is another management-level position rather than clerk level. So, you know, I, I understand the need for the position, and I support the need for it, but the salary is just a big sticking point and not looking for somebody that has a bachelor's degree with the background that we need. That's another, can you answer why we, we didn't put that in?
When we did the job description, we listed out each detail that that person would come in at. They are willing to train people as well, because not everybody coming in that position is gonna know how to do everything in that job.
I understand that.
But I'm trying to answer your question. And when somebody comes into a job, no matter where they are, they have to learn. Because this position was made to cover all three positions, it's a new position, so the person coming in is gonna have probably one or two of the qualifications that they need, but they're gonna have to be taught the other. So we're looking at all of that when we start interviewing. We're looking at, are they looking at the job description, are they looking what it entails, are they looking what directors they'll be reporting to? So there's a lot of things in that job description. Excuse me. So just having a bachelor's degree is going to get us more of the applicants that we're looking for instead of pinning that bachelor's degree down to one specific...
Development, what, what's wrong with saying, some kind of city of planning?
It should be recognized.
Go ahead.
One of the...
Hold on, please.
Answering the question.
Please answer the question, then we're gonna move on to the next speaker. Thank you. Go ahead, answer the question.
One of the things with, with job descriptions, especially if you have very specific bachelor's degrees listed in the job descriptions, it kind of almost limits the amount of applicants.
Into the speaker, you can't, we can't hear you at all.
Somebody's trying, could you... It almost, oh, there we go. When you limit, when you specify the bachelor's degree in, in the job description, what it does is it, it limits your potential pool of applicants. A lot of times, specifically with, you know, planning and development, there's a number of areas where people have earned degrees in and they've developed experience over time, you know, either working in economic development or working in, you know, building or zoning or, or any of those, those specifications. Now, that's not saying that we won't attract people with that background to apply for the job, you know, we just, we're, our concern was we didn't want to limit the scope. We wanted to make sure we had a wide applicant pool.
You're, you're, no, no, you're, you're way over.
No, I have one other thing to say.
You're way over, you're way over, and you're way over.
You know, that's like the schools hiring a teacher that doesn't have background in education, or a hospital hiring a doctor who doesn't have medical degree.
Trustee Frazier, thank you. Click right.
Okay, I think it's, I mean, like, we have said it before, it's our responsibility as the Board is to approve the, the salary, the position and the salary that's being presented in front of us. I mean, none of us had the salary qualification when we are, as of last night, but I just want, if you just go on the internet like I did, and you, you can just Google pay scale for instance, payscale.com, average entry level for urban planner, 50,439. So if the average entry level is that, then if you want to attract a qualified entry-level personnel, you have to either match that or put it a little bit higher than that in order to attract someone that you, you want. And I think at setting the scale at 52, it's not a terrible scale to set it in order to attract a qualified person in order to fill this position. There's a lot of people graduating from college that probably fit this mold. Hopefully, we'll attract a lot of qualified candidates and see what, what's out there. And also, we have one in-house that hopefully will entice her to apply for this position. So that's why I'm okay with 52,000, because I do my, one of the, I do the homework, and although we asked for this information last night, I had time to go on the computer and look it up myself also, even though I know the HR Director was doing her due diligence to bring this information for, for us ourselves. We have a responsibility to do some things ourselves also, and it don't take but minutes to just go Google something and see what's the, the mean, what's the average out there instead of just bouncing our directors all the time. And I think we need to start acting a little bit more professional in regards to how we treat not only our directors, but anyone that come up to that microphone and do a presentation. As the clerk, and I'm speaking for myself, it's, it embarrasses me to see us talk to our personnel and our presenters the way we do. It's the right way and the wrong way to ask questions to anyone. And if you want to ask a question, you ask them a, a question respectfully, you'll get a respectful answer, and it shouldn't have to be a direct harassment all the time of, of the individual that's presenting. So I'm asking that we do that, and also that we respect our policy that we amended ourselves and voted for and put into place. Can we respect that policy and abide by, by going through the chair and speaking to the interim, intern, and be rectified and be nothing by the chair, and don't overspeak and don't take control of the meeting, and give everyone an ample opportunity to speak? Thank you.
Through the Chair.
One second. We've already gone around once now.
We've already gone twice.
Okay, no, actually, no, we're on our second go-around. But dum, 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 okay? I'm sorry, trustee Martin.
Thank you. I think, I think that we're kind of overthinking this, you know, it, it says must possess a bachelor's degree or equivalent prior work experience. The applicants, we're gonna have, I'm sure a lot of applicants is gonna have various degrees of experience, education, or otherwise. I think that our, our staff is astute enough to be able to discern what applicants are gonna suit this position. So I, I don't think you can just say it's entry-level, it may be a person that has two or three years' experience, it may not be an entry level. And once again, as I said, the wage has to be competitive to attract competent and able and educated people for this position.
Good point. That's it. Trustee White, and then Miller.
Supervisor. First of all, I agree with everything that the clerk said and also a lot of things that you said, however, here's... that you said, however, here's my issue. When we are handed information at the board table by hand and we have not had the time to even look at it, must let us go through and analyze it, that's, that's incorrect manner. Also, you're stating in the, I don't know what page number this is on this, but that we're having savings of twenty-eight thousand fifty-five dollars. That may be true in, in the funding. However, when you add in the benefits, that easily could increase to sixty-five or seventy thousand dollars. And I understand in the current budget, the amount that you're listing for water and sewer, for buildings and grounds and for building and planning of eighty-four thousand nine forty-five, and you're saying the cost savings in the current budget is one thirteen for a total of twenty-eight thousand oh fifty-five in total savings. I cannot buy that information based on the total savings. I think that lists only wages, if I'm correct, that's the amount of saving in wages. And, and I have to state, Director Akers, I think you do an outstanding job. I think you've always done an outstanding job and we are very pleased and happy and fortunate to have you as a director in our planning and building. And, and I hope that we can keep you over the years too. But as, as I stated again, to mention again, it is very inappropriate to hand us a piece of paper at the board table that we've never seen before, have no information on and only what we were given to, to make a decision on. And as I've stated many times and Trustee Miller stated today, our job is to take care of the finances of the township and spend our taxpayers' dollars in an appropriate, efficient and effective manner. And I will always believe that and I'll always stand by that, that we do everything we can for our residents. And, and I would be happy if you choose to have somebody on the board to sit in on the interviews, I'd be happy to do that and I'll volunteer. I probably won't get picked, but I'll still volunteer, okay?
I just was, just wanted.
Actually, I don't think he asked a question. He didn't ask a question. No. Okay, where to keep on moving, Trustee Miller?
So, I don't, again, we're to this point and I'm not going to nitpick over what type of bachelor's degree someone has or be overly critical of what I think that job entails. You are the professionals, you know that better than we do. We can give input to a certain degree, but we're not doing that job every day, you are. That's what we have a HR director for. She drives that. She's got expertise, we need to rely on her and the team who's behind her. Enough said about that. Now, getting back to Clerk Wright's point about being overly critical of directors, sure, we should look at that as well. Can you imagine how that must feel when you have someone at that podium and we're all firing shots? That's, you know, because sometimes that's how it comes across. It's not what you're saying, it's how you say it. And some of us can be always taken, you know, out of context. It's just the way people interpret it. But going back to the rules, I agree with those, but when the rules aren't accurately and evenly applied, even the best can go sideways on those rules. Now, we set the rules, but we don't always follow the rules. Our code of conduct, we don't always follow. That's every single one of us, including myself. But you can apply the rules as you see fit with your needs and what you want and how you want to drive it because that shows, and everyone's watching here, control and dominance. And we don't want to show that. We don't want to be over talking and interrupting each other and not being recognized through the chair. And that takes a group of us together to enforce that. And no one is better than the other one in thinking they're allowed to do that to the other. It's not the culture we want to create here and I see that also not being supported. We need to hold ourselves accountable and that includes the supervisor down to the trustees. I'll do my part, I violated those rules, but I've seen the rules violated, so I'll, you know, the gloves are off and we're all ready to push the rules aside. And at that point, no one's listening to one, to each other, we're only reacting. We're listening to what the other person's saying so we can defend. Where's that going? Nowhere. It's not what we're about, it's not what we want to do. So let's get back on point, get back to the rules and support each other. But I'm also going to call everyone out when I see them being broken. And even though you might have a valid point, there's a point of order. Enough said. Call the question.
You don't need to call the question because we already have gone through twice now, so it's time to, we have a motion by Clerk Wright, we have it supported by Trustee Martin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous, motion passes. Thank you. We're moving now, we're now at public comment for the rest of the public comment for non-agenda items. We have nobody on public comment, board comments. Board comments are allowed up to three minutes on any non-agenda item that they wish to make. Does anybody wants to speak?
I'd just like to correct the worth of Ashley Capital. Apple, Google and Amazon and Microsoft are the top companies. Ashley Capital is up there, but their, their CEO is worth three billion also as Jeff Bezos. But they're, but they're not bigger than Amazon.
No, Ashley Capital builds buildings for people like Amazon.
They're real estate investors.
And they built, they're building, what, a million, they have about a million and a half square feet now and they're adding another million and a half. I think the Amazon building is a million square feet, so we've, we've got some.
We've got some good things with Ashley Capital.
And we didn't, and they pay taxes, Amazon doesn't.
You can have everything.
They can have Amazon.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry, Trustee Miller.
What was the vote?
It was unanimous.
Nobody voted no.
Nobody voted against it.
I just wanted to hear it.
I, you know what?
I didn't hear you repeat it.
Okay. You know something? There is, there is a thing in Robert's Rules of Order that allows a reconsideration before the adjournment of the meeting and somebody that, that voted for it has to say they want to reconsider.
I, you know, I just read that myself, absolutely.
So if you would like.
No, I just wanted you to.
Okay, all right, okay.
You usually do that.
I was shocked, I, I waited.
No, I, you usually repeat that, so.
Okay, so is there any other board comments? Hearing not called for adjournment. Moved by Trustee Martin, supported by Trustee Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We are in adjournment, thank you.